Okay, everyone, would we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remain standing for the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mr. Malloy?
Here.
Mr. Hernandez?
Here. Okay, our next public workshop will be held on Tuesday, September twenty-third at ten thirty a.m. here in this room. And our next regular meeting will be held here on Wednesday, September twenty-fourth at ten thirty a.m. Madam Clerk.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the regular meeting dated September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number five is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number six is to approve decrease of appropriations.
I make a motion to approve.
I second the motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number seven is to accept the donation of two hundred and fifty dollars from Trumbull County Auditor Martha Yoder to be deposited into the fund as listed and intended to reimburse the auditor's office for expenses for the fee paid to the Government Finance Officers Association for the Popular Annual Financial Report. This donation is in compliance with Ohio Revised Code nine twenty.
Make a motion we approve.
I second the motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number eight is to authorize the Trumbull County Auditor in conjunction with the Trumbull County Prosecutor to develop a cybersecurity program consistent with the requirements of the Ohio Revised Code nine point six four C and submit for review and approval by the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners.
Make a motion we approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number nine is to authorize Trumbull County nine-one-one to request proposals for the lease of office space to house a renovated nine-one-one dispatch center. Interested parties shall submit proposals meeting the minimum requirements to nine-one-one Director Tacey McDonough at nine-one-one Howland Wilson Road in Warren by three P.M. on Friday, October tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The proposals will be reviewed to ensure that they meet minimum requirements by nine-one-one Director McDonough as well as M.C.M. consultants.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve.
I second the motion.
And discussion? We had a spirited debate on this yesterday, and I think we flushed out some good facts and we flushed out pretty good compromise. We went through the books a little bit deeper and deeper, and I think the consensus of the board now will be that we move forward in the best way we can with nine-one-one and explore the possibilities that are on the table first and any other possibilities that may arise, and then the funding structure, I think, will fall into place as we move forward.
I concur with that, and also there's a good possibility that we can fund nine-one-one without raising the taxpayers, asking them for additional funds. We just need some time to come up with that funding, and I think we all are well aware what's needed out there, and we're all on board with that. It's just I was always concerned about the funding, and hopefully we can correct that and move forward.
Commissioners, I concur with both of your comments. I understand, you know, the necessity of nine-one-one and the move. I also understand the complexity of having to put it to the taxpayers, but we do, I believe, have some alternatives that we can utilize, and I do look forward to that move, and especially for Tacey, our nine-one-one director, and those that are working there in the environment currently that they work in. We will see this come to fruition. It's just a matter of time, so.
I'm going to thank Tacey also for being so persistent and all the hard work she's done to make this move. I want to thank Alex also and Shara for digging deep into the budget with us, and I think the number one thing we don't want to do is raise any taxes, and I think there are as we reevaluated our finances and we dug deep into the budget, we've done, as you said earlier today, at a Chamber of Commerce Committee and Commissioner, we've started out the year with about ten million dollars more in requests than we had money. We tightened our belts. We ordered all the department heads to cut back anywhere that they can, and with our budget the way it is, we're going to hit budget with no layoffs, and we shaved ten million dollars off the taxpayers' dole, and we look forward to moving forward and being able to expand services at the same time of not having to raise taxes on the citizens.
And we were able to do that because of dialogue and just not raising the taxes as we were asked to do in January one, but yeah, you know, the other thing, and I say this all the time when we have a discussion out there, this board is different than the other board. It's not personal. We stick to the issues, and we debate them, and everybody has their own opinion, but when we walk out of here, you know, we're still united, and we were that yesterday and we're that again today, so we don't take it personal. I welcome debate. They welcome debate, and we figure out what's best for the county.
I think too, Commissioner, you said something in passing that we don't get a chance to talk through the week. You know, I can't call you on the phone and say, hey, Tony, what do you think of this? Let's move money here. Let's do this, or Rick, you know, that's not legal. And this board follows the sunshine law rules, and the only time we can really talk is on a Tuesday or Wednesday. So on Tuesdays, sometimes, we get the feelings out. We get our thoughts out. We debate it. We throw it out there. And sometimes, good-spirited adult mental stimulation debate is where you get the solutions. If we don't just rubber stamp, we debate it. We hash it out. We come to a good conclusion, and we've been very successful so far, and I thank you both for that.
Thank you, Commissioner, and if I may also comment that we all share common goals, the commissioners, and that is to move our county forward in a positive direction, and however that works, whether that's economics, you know, stimulating economic activity or, you know, getting these departments where they need to be, then that's our goal, so.
And Commissioner, one thing too, that just because we're talking about nine-one-one today moving forward does not mean we're not still working on the dog pound. Does not mean we're not still working on the corner. We're taking one bite at a time, and all three of them are on the table. They're all on the plate, and we're going to get them all done, but today just happens to be nine-one-one.
Okay, so for item number nine, Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number ten is to award a contract to the lowest and best price quote received by Coon Restoration and Sealants, Inc. to re-point cracked and deteriorated mortar joints at the front entrance of the courthouse and to power wash and seal the stamped concrete in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred sixty dollars with no general fund monies being requested for this project.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number eleven is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed, Drain Designs, Village Energy Cooperative Association, Eastern Natural Gas, and Custom Utilicon.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number twelve is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permit, Hard Knocks Enterprise, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item thirteen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permits to move overweight equipment requested by the company listed, Rich's Towing and Services.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item fourteen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the quarterly operator fleet permit to travel upon load-posted Trumbull County roadways requested by the companies listed, Omega Logging, Inc., and Doll Lumber Company.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item fifteen is to concur with the county engineer to close the following roadway, North Levitt Road in Warren Township between West Market Street and Caulfield Road for a sanitary sewer project. Closure date and time, Tuesday, September twenty-third, seven a.m. through Thursday, September twenty-fifth, six p.m.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item sixteen is to concur with the county engineer's department and authorize the clerk of the Board of Commissioners to re-advertise for bids for the T.R.U. Old Town Viaduct Bridge Rehabilitation Project. This project is being funded at a ninety-five percent by a local major bridge grant obtained through the Ohio Department of Transportation. The project consists of the rehabilitation of the Weathersfield Number Six Bridge on Austintown Warren Road over the Meander Reservoir in Weathersfield Township.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item seventeen is to concur with the county engineer's department and authorize the clerk of the Board of Commissioners to re-advertise for bids for the T.R.U. South Main Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Project, project being funded by ninety-five percent of a local major bridge grant obtained through the Ohio Department of Transportation. The project consists of the rehabilitation of the Warren City Number One Bridge on South Main Avenue over the Mahoning River in the city of Warren.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item eighteen is to authorize the Board of Commissioners to join with the Trumbull County Prosecuting Attorney to file an application with the Court of Common Pleas for the appointment of the Law Firm of Montgomery Johnson, L.L.P. as legal counsel for the Trumbull County Court of Common Pleas Domestic Relations Division to provide legal advice relative to its powers in interactions with Trumbull County Children's Services, including any related legal challenges. Montgomery Johnson, L.L.P. will provide legal counsel and representation at the rate of two hundred and fifty dollars per hour.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item nineteen is to authorize the Board of Commissioners to join with the Trumbull County Prosecuting Attorney to file an application with the Court of Common Pleas for the appointment of Attorney Jennifer Secconi and the Secconi Law Firm as legal counsel for the Trumbull County Clerk of Courts in the appeal of or other legal challenge to the Trumbull County Court of Common Pleas case numbers as listed and any other administrative order of the Court of Common Pleas related to the operation of the Clerk of Court's office. Attorney Secconi will provide legal counsel and representation at the rate of two hundred and fifty dollars per hour.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item twenty is to accept maintenance bond number nine four six eight three six six issued by Fidelity and Deposit Company of Maryland for the Howland Skips Center Improvements Project funded through Project Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Three CDBG Community Development Grant Program and Revolving Loan Fund Program installed by De Salvo Construction Company, Inc. De Salvo Construction Company, Inc. requested final payment for the completed work inspected and approved by G.P.D. Group. The maintenance bond is in the amount of twenty percent, forty-three thousand nine eighty-one eighty, of the final project cost, two hundred and nineteen thousand nine oh nine, and is valid for a period of two years commencing May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item twenty-one is to approve the submitted satisfaction of mortgage instrument numbers listed for Coleman Professional Services as part of the county's participation in the community development block grant fiscal year two thousand and eight Neighborhood Stabilization Program. The CDBG N.S.P. mortgage was for a fifteen-year declining term that started in two thousand and ten. Coleman Professional Services has satisfied all terms and conditions of said mortgage.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item twenty-two is to reject the only bid received for Contract B, part of the Golden Triangle Infrastructure Improvements Project submitted by Shelley and Sands, Inc. in the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one dollar, sixteen cents. The entire Golden Triangle Infrastructure Improvement Project includes Contract A, B, and C. However, only one bid was received for Contract B alone.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item twenty-three is to authorize Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, to issue the notice to proceed and the notice of commencement to Woodford Excavating, L.L.C. for the Pendleton Gilmer Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, number six dash S dash twenty-two in the Combined Sanitary Sewer District.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item twenty-four is to receive the petition for the proposed vacation of a portion of Overbrook Avenue, which intersects with Summit Street within the Cedar Park allotment. Owners of the lands known as parcel numbers twelve, five oh nine, nine hundred, twelve, two nineteen, nine hundred, and twelve, two seventy-nine, three thirty-five, located in Liberty Township, and to adopt a formal resolution setting forth date, time, and place for both public hearing and public viewing on the proposed road vacation.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item twenty-five is to authorize the clerk of the Board of Commissioners to advertise for sealed proposals to engage the services of an outside physician and/or professional medical corporation to provide medical care and treatment to the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office for the inmates of the Trumbull County Adult Justice Center. The contract will be effective for a twenty-four-month period with the option to renew for two subsequent one-year terms at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners with the one-year extensions by negotiated addendum.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion with a question. Has the prosecutor's office looked at this? Okay, and they've approved it?
Well, the prosecutor's office, the request for proposal, I think we talked about yesterday, was sent down for our review, and it was reviewed by our office, and it's ready to go out for bid, yeah.
Were there any changes from this year's proposal compared to the previous years?
It's an interesting question. I think that in both cases, it was modeled after the Mahoning Counties' request for proposals. The sheriff's office could probably speak to that better than I could, but I think that because the administration and the sheriff's office has changed, there was a fresh review of it this year. I'll put it that way.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I got a question for Major Bobby. If you could, Major, the I see this one's two years, and then in addition, it could be an additional two years after that in one-year increments. Is that what this is? So four years until we bid again?
Dave Bobby, jail administrator, yes, which is what we currently have. The current contract with Dr. Malvasi has pretty much the same language. We still have one year left as an option for Dr. Malvasi, but we don't know whether he's interested in returning or not, but the process takes so long that we need to start the process now.
Okay, and what is his contract now for that one year, if we retain him for one year?
What?
What's the value? What's the price?
I believe it's still like one point two million.
One point two million?
Right. Now, one point two million is for Dr. Malvasi's staff and for his services. That does not include all the additional medical expenses that we have to pay in addition to that. You know, our medical contract right now, our medical services for the county are approximately two point four million dollars a year.
Right, but what we're looking for is to fill his term, though, the one point two million again. The services we get from him, this contract mares that.
Correct. So the request for bids for this current contract is a comprehensive contract, which would include medical services, mental health and addiction services, so it's a comprehensive contract, but it also has a section in there so that if the successful bidder would like to continue to contract with Meridian and Coleman Services, who provide our services now, or another company, there's an option in there as well.
So that two point four million is what we expect to spend again for everything, though?
Well, I don't know what we're going to, I don't know what it's going to be, because that's why I want to put it out for bid.
Right, but we know what it is now. What I'm trying to get is what it is now.
We know what it is now.
So we know what to try not to go over. We don't want a five million dollar jail contract or four million if we're only paying three point six right now for everything.
Right, so some of the unknowns are, you know, last year at this time, we were at, you know, almost seventy-five inmates less than what we were last year.
Right.
So some of that stuff we don't control. You know, our population has gone up over a hundred since January. So we're averaging three hundred inmates in the jail where we used to average two twenty, two thirty.
Okay, I'm just going from experience. We renewed last year and the year before. When we looked to put it out to bid, he was at about a million, and the people that we had talked to then weren't going to touch it for under two million, so I just wanted to make sure we're not changing things enough that we're going to double our fees of what we're paying if we already have good service now at the price that we're getting. You know, that was an issue last year that nobody wanted to bid under two million dollars, and he was the only one that had an interest at the price where he was at.
Right, and I agree, but I also think we need to compare the apples to apples. What are you getting for two million dollars? If you just say, well, we are currently paying one point two, and this is two million dollars, but it's also going to include all the additional medical expenses. That's what I'm saying. We're paying two point four million for everything, but we're not paying two point four million to one specific person.
Correct. Okay, that makes sense. So two point four million is kind of the goal to be in that range for everything?
It's what we're paying now, yeah.
Okay.
Well, my question before, it's my understanding that the way the proposal was written, that you had to have jail experience to bid on it, correct?
Correct. And this one says that too.
And that still says that?
Yeah, yeah, it's right. They have to be existing a company that is there to provide medical services to an inmate population.
Okay.
Dr. Malvasi, has he showed an interest in bidding, or do we not know?
I don't know. He, you know, I haven't really sat down with him and said, you know, are you interested in coming back or not? I mean, he's been providing services for twenty-seven years. And, you know, at some point, he, you know, he's going to say, hey, I'm kind of done with this. But the process takes so long that if he gives his notice now, then the clock's ticking, and this takes so long to try to find somebody. That's why I felt like, you know.
But we do have a one-year thing. If we get the bids in, you say, you know what, we're just going to renew with him for a year. Those bids don't apply then to that situation.
We know what to expect for next year.
For next year.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Major.
That's fair.
Okay, so for item twenty-five, Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item twenty-six is to exercise the option of terminating the agreement with Buckeye Energy Brokers, Inc. in accordance with Section four point two of the existing contract. The board also recognizes Section four point three in assuming all obligations and arranging the electric generation service upon termination of the agreement, which is March of two thousand and twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, and Commissioners with discussion, this termination doesn't mean that we are going to terminate our aggregate program with Buckeye. What it is is that there is a six-month term to where if we did not utilize this, that we would be committed to an additional year. And I'd like to thank the prosecutor's office for helping with this. Buckeye's been here for many a years since two thousand and eight, and I don't think, nobody's ever had to exercise this, so there are some other opportunities, and we just do not want to be locked in to a contractual agreement. But again, that doesn't mean that Buckeye's out of the picture, just to make that clear.
And that concludes our regular business, Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question. Mr. Schaefer sees out in the crowd. Last month, we did a road closure in Buzetta Township for one day, Tuesday, September second, from eight to four. I see that road's still closed. Is there something extension on McLeary Jacoby? Is that culvert taking more time than we expected, or why is the road still closed?
Gary Schaefer, Trumbull County Engineer's Office, there were three culverts on that road, and we didn't want to close that road for an extended period while they go from one culvert to the next to the next, so we're closing it down as they proceed with those culvert replacements. They're on the third and final and the largest of the three. Headwalls are being set tomorrow. Road should be open Friday afternoon, so I believe it's just for this week.
Okay, so we closed it for that one day for that one, but we didn't do any motions for the other two.
Four days for the next pipe, which is a little bigger, and then this is the large culvert, which is this entire week.
We just didn't have motions on that. We didn't have that from you, just the one day.
For the one day, that's correct. That is a township road, not a county road, and I coordinated closely with Trustee Hovis.
That's why I'm just wondering why we did one day on there but not all three days when we voted last month.
What do you mean?
Last month, we did a motion to close McLeary Jacoby Road between three oh five and Cornerstone for culvert replacement, Tuesday, September second. Closure time, eight a.m. to four p.m., but then there was nothing on the other two ones. That was just for the one culvert.
Okay, yeah, I don't know why they sent those down. I mean, technically, we don't have to send them down on the township road, so that just must have been a procedural thing that there was.
Okay.
For you guys, but that's why. But all three of those should be buttoned up, and they should be paving that road here pretty soon.
Perfect.
Everybody's delighted out there.
It's long overdue, long overdue.
Questions?
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, before we move to public comment, I would like to thank today the Warren Regional, Youngstown Regional Chamber for the opportunity as the keynote speaker today, and it was a sold-out event. And we had the opportunity on behalf of the Commissioners to share information about, you know, the direction of the Commissioners, where we're going and where we're headed. And I just want to thank the Warren, Youngstown Regional Chamber for that opportunity.
And a couple upcoming events I want to announce also, if I could. Tomorrow is our fourth installment of the Economic Bus Tour. We'll be going to Gasser Chair, the Golden Triangle, Phantom Fireworks, Trumbull Industries, Harried Upton House, and I think that's about it for tomorrow, but those are all good Trumbull County-based businesses. I'm looking forward to that bus. If anyone wants a last- If anyone wants a last-minute seat, call Beth over at Tourism, I think we got a few seats left, and then they have the, uh, Chef's Event tomorrow night, and then on Monday, Howland Township is.
Where's the Chef's Event?
I believe that is at the, uh, at the mall, at the, uh.
At the center?
Yes, the, um, banquet hall of the mall.
Event center.
Yeah, event center from five to nine, and I believe that's for Catholic charities, that event fundraiser, and it's all the big chefs in the valley. And then, uh, Monday at six PM, Howland Township is hosting a taxes seminar for townships, and they invited the Commissioners to be there, uh, to start to prepare should property taxes go away or be decreased to a point on how we're gonna be able to fund police and fire. Um, so that's something, uh, that Howland Township is hosting to try to get everybody ready with a backup plan should that happen, um, so encourage, um, townships to take part in that. Uh, we have a solid, solid waste meeting next week, and, um, I believe that's it for the schedule for till next week.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, um, so we are gonna move to public comment. It is three minutes that we do, uh, give for public comment, um, unless the Commissioners choose to, uh, extend the comments. So if you'd like to enter the podium, give your name, and...
Karen Smart, Youngstown, Ohio. This is a continuance from last week. All right, uh, this mall is the USDA. Okay, I sued the USDA, okay, for reasons, for three reasons, and they, they did me three times, okay, so the third time, I said, that's it. But it, of this, I've been finding out the, there's international contacts with this, and there's money being, and, and assets being moved through Ukraine, okay? Our assets, European and Russian, okay? So this war, I, I, I tell people, don't get involved in this war. There's, there's a lot more to it. And a lot of the failures is because of corrupt officials over there. These people walk away with twenty billion dollars for being an officer of, say, ten years, they walk away with twenties, twenty billion dollars in their pocket. So this, this, their obligation to get their country back into, uh, they don't need all that money, they can give away two billion. Uh, other than that, uh, I approached their central banks, the ones that were involved with my situation with the satellite business. There's, there's eleven countries beside this one, okay? That's involved in it, so I approached their central banks, three of them, Goldman Sachs, Deutsche Bank, and a couple other ones, and Madrid, I was up in Madrid too. So we got, I got some other projects going into, uh, Puerto Rico, and I'm being, that's Burisma deal, was come from these wells here in Ohio. It's in, uh, Ukraine. Okay, this is where this money's coming. I'm just showing you where the money's going, and it's up to you people to get, grab this money back through contracts or whatever. Okay?
Okay.
If I want to say about this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, appreciate your comments. Okay, we are still under public comment, um...
Good afternoon.
Much different Braceville Township, and I guess a couple meetings ago, you brought up about, uh, Blueprint, Print to Prosperity Phase Two, and I guess Gary had said that wasn't sure gonna lose the funding because it's not being completed, or that's where, that's not true, okay? But I did have a business call me this, or last week, about, uh, water line on five thirty-four, and I wasn't sure what to tell him. I said I would come to the Commissioners' meeting and find out plans are still going on, or?
Okay, and I, I did have a petition from Wyndham Road, uh, would be on that to be included if you do put the water line in, so. There's, it's Collins Drive on...
Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, uh, Commissioners, we did get that fifty percent principal forgiveness award for, uh, the Blueprint Phase Two project, and it is on my, I, I got a to-do list on my, uh, uh, desk, and the next step in that is to have the public hearing, and, uh, have the public hearing, put it out to bid, uh, funding's in place, design engineering's done, plan approval, all of that. Uh, right now, it's just clearing all these other projects and getting them going, State Line Road, Smith Stewart, uh, Sheridan, Pendleton-Gilmer, Meadow Brooks in the middle, uh, we're trying to wrap up the State Road Regionalization Project, Delm Road Project, uh, and, uh, Scoville Drive too, so anyway, it's just, uh, we're, we're getting to it, and, and as long as we give the award before, uh, um, June first of next year, we, we still qualify for the financing, so it's not urgent till we get this thing out to bid, but I am trying to work it in as soon as we can.
Gary, I appreciate that. While you're up there, uh, can you talk a little? We got, we all three of us got complaints yesterday in, um, Leuetsburg, um, people having a problem with their wells, that they said that they were having oil or some type of slick in their wells. I don't know if you got to those emails yet. Warren Township called us, and then a couple residents called, said that they were having problems with the wells. Is it potentially just a dry lack of rain? Someone had said in, in one of the, uh, one of the replies that I saw in the emails that, uh, could be that lack of rain has the well at the bottom, and it's bringing all the muck up from the bottom.
Uh, yeah, Commissioners.
You didn't handle that?
I, I, I checked my emails before I even came over. I haven't seen anything about this, so this is the first I'm hearing of it.
Okay.
I, I can't see how any of our activity would, would affect their wells, though.
You know, Commissioner, and thank you, Gary, um, in experience of that, yes, you know, when you have the dry weather like we have, they start pooling from the bottom, and you will get a, a black, oily type substance.
Once that water table gets done, and it.
Right.
Yes.
I'll forward the emails to you, and there's one gentleman waiting for a return call, so I'll pass that on to you after the meeting. I thought you were in that, but maybe not.
Okay.
Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, Dennis Gutcher from Braceville Township, and, uh, the trustees got a letter from Trumbull County Metro Parks about trying to get, uh, land at two hundred and sixty-one acres in Braceville Township for the Metro Parks through the Clean Ohio Funds. Well, the month before, Western Reserve Land Conservatory come to our meeting and wanted us to sign on to it, and the township did not sign on to it. So what they do, they go in the back door and go to Trumbull County Metro Parks and get them to sign on. Uh, we're gonna lose four thousand dollars a year taxes. The money to buy this land is coming from Ohio, so it's our tax money that is buying this land to take money off us, which doesn't make sense to me at all. And the Metro Parks, they've got other lands in Braceville, Elson Moser Road that, that has an old, uh, old cabin on, they have done nothing with it. Uh, the old Metro, uh, Swift Park, uh, get down there some nights, you might smell something, you know, it smelled like skunk, uh, people parked in there. So the Metro Parks hasn't been really beneficial, in my eyes, to Braceville Township.
I, I don't know if we have a representative from Metro, I, I don't know if you may have comment on that, or is it no comment on that? Okay. Um, I did see the email, Commissioners, um, I, I really don't know what to make of it at this time, I, I understand your concerns, and, um, I, I don't know, you know, where, where we go from here, whether.
I, I would just caution, I guess my personal opinion is, is the Metro Parks operates on a certain budget, and we appreciate keeping as much land possible public, keeping it public access, keeping it open for hunting, fishing, but there comes a point, in my opinion, that, like, like you said, when you have, keep gobbling up more and more land, you gotta be able to maintain it, and we have that problem right now with the bike trail, as it's getting older and deteriorating, it's falling back on other people to maintain the property, and I, I, I would just caution, I guess my opinion on that would be, we want to preserve as much land as we can. Western Reserve is, is a great option for landowner, I guess, to preserve property, but if the Metro Parks does take it, or does do that, we would caution and advise, please make sure we got the money to maintain it before we get it. Make, make sure we have that in your budget to be able to keep it clean and safe.
Who, excuse, trustee, who's the owner of the land? Who owns the land?
Amish fellows.
I'm sorry?
Some Amish.
Oh, Amish?
Amish.
Okay. Um, and they, they are looking to sell the property, is that what it is?
Put it up with bail for less than what they're being offered now.
Did they log it?
They've logged it years ago, and it's, uh, it runs right up against Riverview Golf Course, and my other question was, you know, the Metro Parks bought the land on Route Five next to Tesler's, and there was a golf course there, and the owner calls me and complains, you know, kind of, you know, my, the golfers might get hit, you know, from people shooting over, you know, right without Route Five, which, and today, I believe the golf course is closed. This land that they're looking at is next to Riverview Golf Course. So down the road, uh, what's gonna happen?
Uh, we understand your concerns, and, um, you know, uh, Commissioners, we've noticed that it seems as though the Amish come in, they log it out, they, you know, take what they can take, they're kind of, I hate to say it, they, you know?
I do know some of the Amish that own it, and they have hunted on it for years, you know, and they, uh, they have a little cabin back there, so, I mean.
Right.
The trees are growing back up, and, and one time, it was a tree farm, so, I mean, it could be a tree farm again.
Yeah, and, and nothing against the Amish, you're just, what I'm saying, um, you know, that they log the land, they clearcut it, and kind of take all the natural resource out of it, really, and then they put it up for sale, and, um, you know, i- they want to dump it after they, you know, garner, garner the money that they garner out of clearcutting, so, yeah, we would just hope that, you know, the, the board would understand the concern of the Commissioners and the trustees, and, um, it's an autonomous board, you know, uh,